So.
Are we talking about?
This.
I believe we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant expansion.
Yes.
And of course, most of that expansion is for the Carroll County Redevelopment Commission's IPC tip area and also where the Hoosier Heartland Industrial property is located. So, expansion to the south would be benefited by the wastewater treatment plant expansion. IPC is already requesting more capacity. We are bumping up against that capacity, so we've been planning for several years now on increasing the plant capacity, and we're just about at the point now to launch Phase One and Phase Two with wastewater treatment plant. That will mostly benefit the areas of development to the south, which is where the Carroll County Redevelopment Commission has already established a commercial tip. So, I think it's, I think we're kind of talking apples and oranges. The area that we're talking about to the northeast with the planned types of business that would be going in there, mostly just logistics, does not require a great deal of wastewater capacity. Food processing, tremendous amount. Other types of industrial development that, you know, Jake is now kind of handcuffed because we don't have the wastewater capacity. That's what that project is about. This project to the northeast is, you know, within the capacity, the current capacity of the wastewater treatment plant.
Doesn't require, doesn't require any expansion of capability.
On the ones that are looking right now.
Right.
Right.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
You know, everybody bringing up the issues I have concerned about the water reserve, here's the thing, is jobs. When we talk about this, just go bring in a few jobs or a lot of jobs, you know, twenty jobs, fifty jobs, hundred jobs. What are you looking for? What's your game?
So, there will be jobs associated with that. We don't have those numbers yet because the projects are not fully defined. The wastewater treatment plant expansion and the jobs, the increased jobs at Indiana Packers Corporation are already pretty much determined. When we get that plant expansion, they're ready to add, what, another couple of hundred at least?
Point jobs. But you're not talking about building, building for storages, unlike you're talking about building, building where actually people just don't work there and, you know, and it'd be actually big jobs where we create jobs.
Yes, there will be jobs, we just don't know the number of jobs.
Yeah, but what you're looking for is just go bring jobs. It's not, it's not just, I've seen this belt, but to go to these cities, they've got these warehouses over there. Warehouse doesn't create many jobs, but if you get a manufacturing facility, that creates jobs. And that's what we need. Manufacturer facility or anything creates need for people.
And Jeff, I would tell you that that is, every bit of our negotiation with these expansion projects is, is, is net jobs, right? So, I mean, sixty job commitment in our community is one percent growth. One percent massive. So, we're not, I'm not shaking down like these, of course, we're chasing every project that looks at our community, but even if it's a warehouse that employs thirty, and we can increase our employment at half a percent, and then we have places to let them bring income taxes to come back into the coffers.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, yes, it is, you know, supply chain logistics in nature out that, you know, out of that direction, which is more viable. But they're gonna need the infrastructure in the ground, and none of that's gonna happen unless they have a firm job commitment in writing, and it's presented to the commissioners and the city and the L five that they've committed to those jobs. And then all this other policy that we're working on now can, can work towards that, so.
Same.
And if you guys don't do well at anything out there, they reverse back to us.
Patrick Tittner.
Patrick Tittner with no debt, you can say, well, they didn't do anything, you can take it. But I guarantee that will.
What I've heard through the community, I think it's gonna be a good thing. I was just wondering, you know, people, like I say, put me up here and had questions, so I'm kind of convinced this is a good thing, and I'll talk to Jake. We do need growth, we need to look out. I think the railroad thing we talked about, it might be an issue out that way, but I think there's something that comes across. I don't know.
Whatever's the impact on the railroad and current crossings out that way. Will that increase the blockage on the, on the railways? There's a possibility that.
We, we've worked with Norfolk and Southern on a couple different models of what's ideal, what works. So, until we know the scope of any potential development, then we would look at, they would look at engineering the rail so that it's not obstructed. We're already battling a hundred and forty trucks that come in there in the fall, right, for harvest. So, we're working within that, we've already exchanged and worked with the long-range transportation plan, and the rail is too, is that hilarious? We've gotta start thinking twenty, twenty-five years down the road, so we're not stuck with a product that really just jams up that northeast border for the community. So, yes, I, I've seen a couple of different rail variances, but depending on if they want to direct load or if there's some kind of process that requires a different side rail, so yes, that.
Simple, they're interested vehicles, traffic.
Yeah, of course, a two-eighteen traffic there.
This is not your project, you're bringing this along.
The current, the current rate rail siding issue is you put all the siding on your own property, right? You would never wanna design something for the future that would block that crossing, I don't think.
Yeah, well, we had looked at backing it in from the north and how long that side rail has to be in order to get them to back, back into it instead of backing in from the south where you're obstructing, you know, two-eighteen. And then, secondly, you've got trucks you want in your own building, and you're paying them, you don't even have access, so.
Yeah, between the Andersons and when they load in the semis, it's a mess.
Right, so ideally is we.
They could try to do it all at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah, so the ideal is just put together a plan and policy in place that we have the ability to make the right decisions for the community.
Of course, I remember back when the Hoosier Heartland was coming in and all the discussions about how long the lane needed to be to turn there and all the trucks backed down on the Hoosier Heartland, and we go through this whole thing, a long time. Well, gentlemen, it's time to make a decision.
Yep, I'm in favor of it. I think the redevelopment, pretty much got a pretty guarantee, and then got a call back from the city and the L five and residents. And if nothing gets developed, then you're gonna have to back this. But I look for something to be out there in the next three, four years. So, I'm gonna make the motion to adopt resolution or read it right there.
Read, where's the doc?
Just adopt.
It's not a man.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, Jake.
So, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty-two, twenty-two dash oh six. Is that correct, gentlemen? Okay. So, I call, any comment, anybody? I call for a vote. All in favor of adopting this resolution, please say aye.
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 Thank you. How many copies? Does that have the September version?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very much.
Right here. I know I have a lot of questions.
It's all right, okay.
You gotta make sure we got our dogs or chickens. Be careful.
You have the, they need. You need the city to read it.
Keith, they are already there.
Yeah, we're in the middle. I'm already caught up, so I figured you guys had three-minute intermission.
We are ready.
You're right. So, I was approached by Corson, and I really don't have great details as to why, but they're requesting a credit application should be filled out by the county for the huge and the size and the cost of the work for the alarm system that they're wanting to put in. I don't know.
He's gotta have a credit application.
Oh, that's.
I, I looked at it. How much was this contract worth, seventy?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. I've never seen that on this small deal, and it doesn't really fit municipal corporations, so I know that you're.
And even he stated in his email to me with this attached, that it threw him off because of being a government entity, but it's what his bosses are asking of him, which I'm.
We have never done.
Okay, I missed hearing some of this at the start. I don't, I don't know what.
So, so for the fire alarm system that, with the, Corson came back to me, my contact, and stated that his supervisors are requesting that due to the scope of work, they're wanting a credit application by the county to be filled out for the project.
It's not a finance project, it's gonna be cash, neither.
Correct.
So, I would, I would, I would suggest how, how, how time sensitivity is.
Well, everything, I mean, right now, we're still trying to get everything through, and like he stated, whatever, the time sensitivity of this credit application or filling it out, not filling it out, is not going to hinder the project itself because they're still trying to get parts in, trying to get everything done, so that way, hopefully by the end of the year.
Is it the same people doing the elevators, wanting to put in the fire?
No, no, the Corson.
Find someone else to bring in the system.
If I had to guess you table a credit application part, is that okay?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't sign it.
I wouldn't sign that either.
You've got to put your personal.
Correctional.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, if he's ordering these parts, I mean, they're getting them in, and you have a bill, we can pay that, and it will help the situation, I think.
My intention was to call him and try to get back with him, because he was off for a while, so I've been very difficult to communicate with him, but right after this meeting, with him, get ahold of him before, to, you know, go over this stuff again.
You give them my contact information, or you give their contact information, I'll be letting them get.
Can do this. Unless you go to Indianapolis, if a kid coming out of Indianapolis.
Because it seems like if you're having trouble communicating with them already.
Well, he was off for a while, vacation or whatever.
If you were on vacation, I mean, for somebody who's doing a seventy thousand dollar job, I'm gonna answer my phone. Would you not do that? I'd go text me when he was on vacation. So, I mean.
I agree.
They're just, I don't know, it just don't settle up. I appreciate that.
So, it's good with her right now?
Oh, I'm not gonna put my expectation on, on one of them.
No, I, I know.
Are you not requesting that it look further out for other companies?
I don't think.
I just tell them we're not gonna fill this application.
I don't think so either. I honestly don't either.
They're going to turn you down and do a lot of county work.
Correct. And they know that it's, Matt and I have had many conversations where he knows that he has the parts, he has the invoices to be, they're getting paid for immediately, well, you know, when the next page goes out for the climate duty and stuff like that. All I do is just give them the invoices, and it's gonna get paid out right, you know, then, so I don't know. I don't know where the gap is, communication on their side, because I've been very straightforward on our processes and the payment, and once they have the invoices and stuff like that, I'm really trying to push them to get everything in so that way we can get this project done by the end of the year.
That's it, give them all that information and.
Will do. Will do.
So, it's not table, what are we doing?
I'm motioning to table it until we hear back from them.
Do we need a motion on it, Jeff?
I wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I know you do a lot of utilities on that.
Most of them get out of the media, I'm here on contact management, I have the technical information. The other one, other topic is courthouse usage, application and grounds usage application. This is to exclude the application that's for the proms, like different applications. This is just specifically for organizations that request to use the grounds or the courthouse. It's not including the proms. I want to make sure I said it, because there's, it's different wording and stuff like that.
It's, I guess, one that has the highlights that Hooton and I worked on after having the old settlers, which in wasn't as bad, that Bacon Fest, we came across some things that he brought up that made sense, so.
So.
Should be very bad.
So, one.
Tell them that what's highlighted is.
So, you want.
Yeah, one is highlighted, one is.
Damage deposit.
Well, let, let me explain why it's that.
Well, so, basically, on this application, when an organization comes in and requests to use the courthouse or the grounds, the custodian is not required, well, I'm sorry to strike that, rewind. Upon an organization's request to use just the courthouse grounds, that means the custodian is not onsite. When they want inside to use the courthouse on the inside, use restroom stuff, custodian's here. Plays a big factor on cleanup. Old settlers, they want requested to utilize our restrooms, that's fine, and then the custodian's here, custodian's cleaning up and maintaining it the whole time. Bacon Fest, on the other hand, another big event, they don't request a custodian onsite because they only want to use the grounds. The issue with that is, is that, so, yeah, Bacon Fest, we come in, I come back in on Monday morning, and I've had to spend an hour and a half, that's not including any time that the lawn care had to go in through, pick up after mowing and talking to him, and the contractor that was here working on boilers. It was still pretty bad. But I had to spend an hour and a half of my time that was supposed to be dedicated to courthouse and stuff like that, but not picking up after an event, taken away from it. So, I mean, that was, is the most aggravating on my side of it, because there's still a lot of trash and stuff like that out there. So, and also, it doesn't include the fact that if an event is held on the courthouse grounds, everything is waived from the commissioners' liabilities, and yes, they have to prove or have proof of insurance of two million dollars, but it does not protect the structure of the courthouse. So, if an event team, we'll say Bacon Fest, for example, they have a big event, we'll say it gets out of hand, they have riots. People, you know, get drunk, start throwing stuff through windows or anything else like that. There's nothing other than the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars that would put down for damages that they would be responsible for. Because for the insurance, for like old settlers, it's to cover that they have insurance if someone gets injured on their rides or at one of their fishing machines or whatever else. It doesn't cover if there's, if the general public attending these create damage during one of these events that has mass groups together, it doesn't protect anything other than our, our own insurance that would have to go back after it or the legal fight to prove that it was the event team that's liable for the damages.
But they should be responsible for picking up their trash after an event they made.
I think this is the first year tapping though like that, though. Out of all the years they had to Bacon Fest, was this the, I mean, there's gonna be a little bit.
There's been pluses and minuses, and, I mean, there's only two events that we, well, other than the Easter egg pie, only two big events as, and old settlers wasn't bad at all, other than a few cigarette butts and stuff like that, pick up and stuff like that, it was very, it, it really was. I just, like I said, I had to spend an hour and a half of my time out there cleaning up. I can only imagine what lawn care took, they'd be able to mill around this stuff so it's not, you know, spreading papers and all that stuff throughout there. I just, my biggest thing was is to ensure that this application going forward protects everything for bigger events. And because it's pretty vague on the side of that, you don't wanna just waive, you know, any liability on the commissioners and stuff.
Well, I can see we need to admit already for fifteen dollars an hour, we can.
We can't, because that's in salary, that has to be. And what happens is when they do hire, or when he does approve this, then like the Delphi Lions Club, for instance, or the, that's, BFW. If they have him here for the bathrooms, they reimburse the count, so you enter it in, and then we pay him. It's, it's just a, probably a stakeholder accounts deal. That's why that amount is in there. And the other thing that, you wanna just read that, what, so the public knows what's.
Oh, so what, edit to the main application was, the organization representative is responsible for cleanup after their event. A damaged deposit of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars will be required at the time of the filing. Deposit will be returned if cleanup is satisfactory with the custodian.
And that check can be held and put in our safe, and when it's all done and said, then we get their check back, we won't cash it, we just hand it back to them. That's what the city does, I know, for the Boy Scout, Catholic, and things like that, so. We, I just think that that's something that might help clean up the, ton of words there, clean up the situation.
Okay, so all this yellow in here is new language?
Uh-huh, we didn't have that in there before.
It's two thirty, enough?
Well, we did have it at one fifty, and we talked, and.
It depends on the severity, I mean, each event can be different, each year can be different. I mean, you don't know, there's not a good number you could just predict and throw out there. Did you throw way too big of a number? I mean, the event team could be, you could just shun away people that wanted to reserve the courthouse. Because you have people like Bacon Fest that makes, you know, all this money, but then you have like the BFW that has to put down the same security deposit or damage deposit, no matter what you make that.
So, we could leave that blank, and we could discuss it when the law comes in.
I like that, though.
The size of the group?
On size of the group, yeah.
There you go. And this belongs to everybody, so I don't wanna restrict people from using it and enjoying it and being here.
It also measures respect.
Well, you can't just leave your.
Be waiting up afterwards is.
That's what happened.
If it took you an hour and a half, though, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we would talk to you an hour and a half.
Well, that's just damage deposit.
That wouldn't go again.
Yeah, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't go to me. But then on the same side of that, what Beth was saying is that, like with the BFW, when any application filled out that requires the custodian to be onsite, the cost of the custodian to work and clean up and pick up trash is accounted for on the application. When you have an event that doesn't require Bacon Fest, a custodian, and then the custodian has to go out there and do what they said to sort of do on the initial application, that takes an hour and a half of what's not being reimbursed by the event team or the organization.
Kind of, and also that it wasn't pretty, the actual original, that they're responsible for cleaning up. And I think this specifies that they all are, and I think.
Oh, they didn't even sign anything if they were responsible for cleaning up.
Well, I don't believe that it says that.
No, it's not, it wasn't in the original application for the edit. Beth and I talked about, the original application, it doesn't, it doesn't specify cleanup or anything like that.
Did you say anything to the Bacon Fest representatives that it was a mess? Because if we don't allow them to come up here, that Bacon Fest will have to find somewhere else to help.
Not that we're not allowing.
I know, but I'm just saying, if they keep tearing stuff up, I mean.
And it wasn't, it wasn't the fact that they tore stuff up. And don't get me wrong, like, I love when everybody comes to center town, like, and everybody getting together, like, old settlers and the way you just going. I mean, I love that, but it just, to protect going forward, you know, the courthouse and the grounds, you know, surrounding area. This has to be updated.
We're not saying that they damaged anything. We're just saying that they left the trash. We've had phone calls from storefronts, and we've had from other people, I'm just gonna say, that were upset, and I said, call the Carroll County Chamber, it's not our responsibility. So, we're just trying to.
Cover ours. Correct.
So, do you want us to adopt this, or?
If that's what you think, or if you wanna put the two-fifty to a blank, I can do that. That's up to you.
And if you don't want to zero it out, the damage deposit.
We're just trying to help, help the situation, because we don't really have that many activities on.
I mean, even that two-hundred-and-fifty, some of these smaller organizations.
It'd be too high.
It'd be too high for them.
But also, when he gets it, he can fix it, you know, because he knows what they're gonna be, you know?
Well, I'd say leave it blank, let him decide, the custodian decide, I don't know, some deposit for that event.
Which is.
Either, or we should say Bacon Fest is two-fifty, old settlers is two-hundred, and anything else is fifteen.
Yeah.
How soon do you need to?
No, this is just something that came up, though. Yeah, we don't have another event coming up for a while, so.
I am concerned about the fifteen dollars, two hours.
That is, normally it's not key, it's, you know, the part timers that do that, and the council has said extra events at fifteen dollars an hour.
I think if you ask the council, pull the phone that we're calling forward.
I do, because I think it should be something that, I mean, if you're asking somebody to come in special time and just be here, I think it should be a special reward for them to do that. And besides that, wages, wages and workers will run past fifteen dollars an hour, I would ask.
Well, I think it'd be okay for this year, and it might, and they won't change it until next year.
Okay.
And I can bring dialogue that budget time if you'd like me to, or when you present your budget, you could.
If you remind me.
I will remind you.
Okay.
For instance, if we had the festival of trees, that would be another, it's not that he's moving you on board, but this is something I think you need to clean up after the event, because that didn't happen.
We have it, I gave it.
I know.
I missed that. Okay, so, gentlemen?
We're the one who decides what the deposit we leave.
Martin?
We leave them up to him, or we set it or so, like he just put out.
It'd be easier for him if we were to just say, here's what it is.
It's either just to come across, I mean, if you want, table it and have it for another discussion, to try and figure out, you know, the size of the event, because based on the size of the event, they, you know, damage the water as well, like Bacon Fest, a lot of them, old settlers.
Any other custodians that have events like we do to see what they do?
Sure.
Yeah.
And I don't want the little guy to be disturbed by my belt, though.
Well, we could put large events, two-fifty, small events, fifty.
Then you have to decide what's a big event, what's a...
I would, actually, I think it'd just be easier to just put like, um, anything that's gonna be five hundred and above people, that's big, you know, or...
I don't have my trim on this far.
I'm just trying to simplify it. I just, you have two different rates for anything under five hundred, and it's this amount for the bottom, anything above, it's this amount.
I mean, if we have a Bacon Fest thing right here, like, do you know?
A lot.
About nine thousand.
Their pre-sales, their pre-sale tickets were twenty, eight hundred, and it was, I think Mili said it was close to a regular ten.
Right, do you have a better prediction?
We have about like thousand.
Nine thousand?
We tripled the population in Delphi the other day, basically, so, and I would tell you on the trash side, I left at two forty-five Sunday morning, and I was the only person on the street. Uh, there just wasn't enough volunteers at the end of the night to solve this, and this policy is going to address that, and I think the organization, who includes Bacon Fest, will have plenty of coverage on the back end, uh, to make sure we're leaving our community, uh, like we found it.
My suggestion is large events two fifty, small...
What's that?
My suggestion would be two fifty for large events and small events, fifty, and just have it on that same line.
All right, I'll make the motion at that same level.
Policy for ground uses, uh, large events would be two hundred and fifty dollar deposit, and small events, fifty dollar deposit, and the amount will stay at fifteen an hour for this year.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yoman?
Real quick, I wanted to commend Keith and his staff for the appearance of the floor tiles throughout the courthouse. I think they look absolutely classic, so I wanted to add some along.
They did look very shiny, I almost had to put the sunglasses on.
It's kind of funny watching them walk across.
Because it's like...
How could they dump?
Thank you.
Yeah, Ethan came to make my sign and said, have you seen the floor there yet? I said, no, I haven't. He said, we gotta put that on our floors. So he found out what it was, and here we are out there. Okay, uh, Ted?
You have a resolution, uh, the sheriff communicated to, uh, he's been with council already about this, and that's right, to approve purchase of a city police vehicle for three thousand dollars, and...
Would you take twenty-five?
It's already agreed.
Just kidding, Ted.
That's okay. So it's an intergovernmental transfer property, which is statute that allows the units of government to reach any church, and you've given vehicles to Miami County and...
To guess, kind of.
To Cast County and to, uh, to another county. You gave another vehicle to, obviously, he has a priority as a...
Ben, trust it.
Yeah.
Ben, count it.
So, this one is for purchase of a gift, or they probably got me any more. It's fairly new, though.
Correct. And this replaces the one that was involved in the accident, right?
Correct.
I'm gonna make a motion, too.
Resolution point two oh seven.
Didn't need to go by a church, but, oh, it's already equipped, right? You get everything? You just gotta re-sticker?
There, there are a couple of exempt items in, in there, but we can cover that.
Thirty thousand?
How many miles on that? You know, they're tall.
Let's say somewhere around twenty thousand, but I can't be wrong about that.
Now, this isn't an old conqueror you want to get rid of.
Hey, can we get extended warranty?
Did you make a motion?
I did.
In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Two copies, you want to put the saline in one or unless...
Yep, I know.
And there will be a similar, uh, resolution at the city council meeting tonight, so should be done at that.
Thank you for the opportunity on that.
Hey, Ted, is there anything else?
Yeah, hold on, so how about the next item on the agenda? Uh, Jake and, uh, RDC, they, they shared with me the agreement between, uh, the RDC...
RDC or BE?
EDC, I'm sorry. Uh, EDC and, uh, the RMC on broadband, and we have a confidentiality agreement that the county signed. We cannot discuss that in an open view, and I consoled with Beth, I told her that I'd be bringing this up. I would like the board to schedule an executive session because they can do so because of the confidentiality that's required, uh, to discuss this, and, uh, it can be done any, any time that the board can convene, and you can, uh...
No notices?
Pardon me?
Do you want to have a note?
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah, there'll be notes. You have to, you have to have at least forty-eight hours.
I'm pretty sure they're ready to get this started.
Yes.
I forgot about the confidentiality thing.
And, and it's, the, the confidentiality is for competitive nature because broadband is ever-changing, so it's more about the market for the company than it is, uh, the public funding piece of it, so...
So you'll go with this?
Yeah.
I mean, we kind of have to, because we signed the agreement.
I think we meet with the company, uh, in executive session, figure out what their needs, desires, and the terms of the agreement are, and make sure they're, they're holding the line, and then...
And I, I think that the board should invite at least a representative to, from the county council, to participate in it, because the confidentiality agreement covers, covers them as well. In other words, and, and the board can, can have members, any, anybody invite, can invite anybody they wish to, that's necessary to the purpose of the executive session, too. And so I would suggest that it be done in time that somebody from the council can also attend.
How do we go when we get to?
Well, just authorize Beth to, uh, to get a time, and you can be done, you know, late in the afternoon, and I'll come back out.
What do we do like next week? Because I'm pretty sure it's gonna get tight and sensitive.
Yes, the, the sooner the better. The company's ready to go.
Yeah.
Four things to the three.
And I also have some questions that I want to get answered by Dustin from Orange Stormwood about TBA, about the money.
So we can do it today? I think thirty on the nineteenth before it measures, a half hour or enough?
Yeah, eight.
Yeah. Half hour, three time?
On the nineteenth. That way the council meets on the...
You see the...
Me? I'm getting ready to ask a question.
What, yeah?
Well, I, I, I'm confused about what your role is in that. I mean, you, you can't make a decision, a final decision, in an executive session. So, wha, are you negotiating? I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
And are you coming back to make a, a, a final decision in a public meeting?
If they do.
And that would, the decision about what?
That'd be deployment. So when, when deployment phases go, how the build-out's gonna work.
How about money? I mean, is there money, I mean, the contract?
Yep.
Pardon me?
You'll talk about everything, the contract, the resolution, everything.
Yeah, because the underlying contract is confidential.
And that would be between EDC and, and Broadway?
Yes, but, but Carroll County signed a document guaranteeing the confidentiality of that information.
Between EDC...
But the public portion of it, public portion of the agreement between the county and EDC will, will, will be, you know, decided in an open view.
Okay. I just didn't quite understand...
I'm glad I asked, because I didn't get it.
Yeah, yeah.
The basis of it is that the, the legal requirement that discussion involving anything that contains that the agreement between the RMC and EDC has to remain confidential.
Oh, yeah, and, and, yeah, that's real understandable. Uh, I would just be watching the, you know, you know me, yeah.
Okay.
So we're good at that? We're gonna try the nineteenth at eight thirty?
You might want to come up with a backup, or, or whatever Beth actually suggests for me.
We're not making any decisions, it's just rolling out the contract that we've negotiated with the, uh, RMC. Uh, answer any questions from the company, from us.
They do it at the nineteenth, i- i- if, if council person was available in the morning?
I would do it before eight thirty.
Eight o'clock?
It's at eight o'clock.
I might not be here at eight. I might, I'll be here by eight fifteen. I'm pretty, unless something happens, eight fifteen, you know.
I don't really like eight o'clock either, but I don't think it's gonna take just a half an hour.
All right, I'm, I'm, eight fifteen on the, on the nineteenth, that's my...
What time?
Eight fifteen. Give me time to come and get your coffee. Well, see, perfect. You make coffee fair enough.
I don't have the percolator.
Get donuts?
What's your...
They do that for the commissioner.
Really?
Yeah.
What?
They have coffee bottle on for commissioner, maybe to try to...
He used to. When I was out of there the last time, there used to be a coffee bar. Then our office didn't, well, things have changed, but we didn't drink it at all, so that we know we didn't have...
Coffee. So if you second the motion, one, I'll, I'll sign.
I just went in at eight fifteen, nine AM.
Eight fifteen next week. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to have an executive session at eight fifteen in the morning of the ninth, nineteen, twenty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passed. Any else, Ted? Okay, then we're ready to go to, do you have any, thank you for coming. Uh, do you have any more to bring up, too?
Mr.?
Not sure.
Thank you.
Yep, got no more there, huh? Okay. Other commissioner actions, courthouse usage, ground application for sign, the family.
I didn't see that, but... The one that says eight fifteen AM? Well, let me look at Bill. I can always find it in Bill.
Interested, man, plus you wait.
I need to.
Be interested.
What's that?
You know, I don't want to talk like a man in his box, and I don't feel good, and I knew I needed to do something, but I was not...
Hey, the family health, funny, desires, use Carroll County courthouse, during hours of eight to twelve, eight A to twelve PM on a solid day. Yeah, five people, just keep one. October fifteenth, for the purpose of doing it in Delphi dash five K walk run, and Dinky Dash. If they let me into Dinky Dash and... Ready to hear a motion on it, children?
Well, we got an issue with it already. He just said sixty dollars, we just put a motion of the two hundred dollars.